Good evening everyone. Welcome to the Town Council Play Committee. Just like to read the script out before we get started. This speech is being recorded by the Town Council. Please note that the recording device is sensitive and the recording cannot be edited. So do not say anything you do not want to be told. If necessary, I will direct your recordings and route them stopped. But definitely, I want to avoid doing so. So if you normally record anything except any untaken information. Members of the public may also make room for recordings. But all animals were doing so. Including stopping recording when requested. Whilst we do not accept the number speakers in the public forum. Members of the public who wish to speak but do not want their name published. Must please indicate this little saying or please. Before we start, I'd like to welcome Hannah from the news. And give our best wishes to Deborah. Pities scrapsence.
There's apologies from councillor Martin and councillor Garry Strad.
Declaration of recusing interest and request for dispensation. Anyone have any requests? Many to the previous meeting? Page 170. 171. 172. Everyone can take that as a true record. Any matters arising from the minutes? Item five, for members of the public to speak on planning application in the full committee. Does anyone in the public forum speak?
John?
Yeah, just a couple of quickies. Item number... Number four, the conversion of a house of occupancy. I know for a fact the police are looking into the general concept of occupancy houses in town and elsewhere with certain antisocial behaviours going on. I know it's not a planning issue per se. But when you get to that point, you may wanna... You could comment on that online, I'm not certain what you can. And also, item number seven, which is another planning job for a house of Queensport. As we all know, the pay three were given to carte blanche under the permitted development plans. I wrote about it about a month ago because a friend of mine wanted to put a planning on. And they turned around and said, "No, you don't need it because it's permitted development." But we seem to be getting all these planning applications coming through where planning's going on and people are having to get the planning permission. So I may have had these clarifying, there was one last month, I think it was.
There was, and we asked the Department of Land Management on that.
Yeah, the way the HH on the applications, householder application are within the permitted development etcetera. They still actually have to put that application in. The assumption is that it will just go straight through. I'm not entirely sure that our comments would make any difference even if we said no to something like that.
Well, that was not what the planning department told me when I asked about my next order of work. One, basically you don't need to put anything in.
Well, you certainly do need to put stuff. You can't, permitted development doesn't mean you can just put up a conservatory and put an extension in front of your house, within your house. You still actually need to let the planning authority know what you've done to the house. It could be a positive evidence. Yes, yeah. That's not quite the same thing as not telling what you've done.
It seems that they don't seem to understand at all what we're saying.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Anything else, anyone else have anything to say? We'll move on. Number six, proposed stopping up of the high road. And that proposed up, the partway to Naylor Road. This is for someone who's sent through to councillors, other than wants to comment about it. Can I ask if anyone in the committee wants to back their comments? Anyone happy? Take that. Right, move on to item seven.
Excuse me Chair, I have to apologize. The... I've just lost pack to clarify for me because I can't hear very well. We've got to ban on above unfortunately. I know there is concern by residents up in Naylor Moding. In fact, they've had a notification from the borough that the reason that they're digging up and they're putting in some parking provision. One of the reasons given is for potential expansion. Where they've appealed the decision. Where the borough said they would not accept the planning application for Naylor Road. And it is on the grass verge. And it was all arranged sort of at the same time when the first application went in. The Suffolk County Council said they would put extra parking spaces around the edge. So if that's what we're talking about, the residents have got concerns.
Well, that is the reason about length of highway, providing access to Naylor Road.
Is there a... If you should, if I could say it online, I'd know if it was correct or not. That's Naylor Road, that's where it's still applying that. That is it, it's on this grass verge. We're gonna dig it out, how we're gonna dig it out, we've put...
Parking spaces.
Parking spaces in. And that's the reason for that is potential development, they were told, the residents. Now whether it would have happened anyway because of lack of parking spaces. Because parking up there at particular times is a problem. What I'm also seeing is this bit here. At the moment, that's the garage here, so this is road, isn't it? This here. Black and white, I'm assuming.
So there.
It says, "Stopped up, highway to be stopped up."
Yeah.
That means being put into hard surface, isn't it?
Yeah. Well, there's concern from the residents that this is the beginning of the end, if you like. Because there's an appeal going. They've appealed to the decision to use the application. So I'd just like it noted, I think, and then let's see what happens.
Right, number application. Sierra 196, revised plan declaration. Provision of details under outline planning provision, SE 121329 O U T. The previous landscaping, layout and scale were one number detached, dwelling on plot three. Requiring roofs and such designs. Which I believe in where Mr Prup's...
There's three big ones that have come out.
Anyone have any comments? Happy?
Chair, I've made a comment that it's executive housing. And we're gonna need executive housing. We've been saying for quite a number of years that we need a second housing. This is a problem, this is part of the self build second housing service. So I support it, really.
Everyone's supporting it? Number two, 2180, provision of new football turn pitch, fences and floodlight columns and light fittings for the Harewood Community Sports Association at the new craft. Any comments?
I'd support it, Chair. It's just an added facility for the youth in that town. Not fully support what's going on on there.
Fully support. Number three, outline plan application, beams of access and layout to be considered. One number dwelling with associated access and car parking for laying down a system agricultural building. And this is a bit more farmed up than is laid built right up. That's what's proposed. Quite different.
Yeah, that's actually gonna sit in behind those three new big executive ones that are built. So it's saving an old town building down to a new, another new second housing.
I think your previous comments occurred with that as well.
Well, yeah.
Everyone happy with that? Yeah, everyone's happy with that. Number four, conversion to a seven bedroom house to multiple pocketed seating. HMO, via Rattin Road. And we've already heard John's comments. Anyone else wanna add any comments on that?
Yes, can we look at it?
Sorry? You can look at it, yes. And so, ground floor. Just mindful of the 12, we're gonna hang around too long.
Yeah. Chair, can I come over with the property at the moment is a five bedroomed property. Proposed converting to a second studio or bedsit, that, bedsit rooms. Clearly meets a demanding existing agglomeration. The only concern I would express, this plan's a quite difficult to know. Is there doesn't seem to be much opportunity for escape and ventilation. And I'd ask, yeah, I'd have to ask the planners if it's appropriate for a condition on the some additional exits and allow. There are three floors and one flight of stairs is the only exit. Even if it was only sort of a roadblock around the window, it would be an improvement.
It's not allowed, sure?
Well, I think for home, patient homes, they have to have other means of escape. They have to have a fire escape and they have to have means of escape windows, that's part of the conditions for it, you know what I mean?
I think we should make that to your end, a decision we make.
A lot of my, my second.
There is a concern by highways also about parking spaces. I'm not sure the type of occupant, but if it's the type of occupant, I think they're not necessarily likely to have cars.
Should assume.
I do agree with, with, um, we did need this sort of combination. There's very little of it in the town.
Do we wanna note then that second means of escape would be advised?
Isn't it? I think we have to just say subject to the relevant legislation, play down on fire danger.
Betty?
If there's no room for a fire escape, second staircase. They have these windows that rotate, escape windows down there. Surely that should be ensured, the best in situation.
There was violence, Paul.
If the tap residence don't be passed, I'd like to see that.
So probably means there's just kind of... Yes. And everyone's happy with that. Barry?
Surely the part you must come into this because this is the old river in Charmott House. And this is the one that Liz Ainge drive goes up there.
Yeah.
And dentists is next door. You've got all the bombing community in Kangal. But the road is a, it's not a really standard road there, is it? Which goes into the roundabout. Now, if you've got five occupancies, you can't guarantee there's ten people living there. Surely well, someone has a car. Surely there must be some kind of provision.
But they have illustrated free car parking spaces.
No, really?
From Ainge's plans. I don't think it's on there actually. So there is provision for free cars. My only objection is that there should be number one breach room. Given this is in the middle of town and the nature of the occupancy, that seems to be supported. So free parking spaces should be answered.
Yeah, because in theory, you turn a couple of yards into parking spaces.
I think the public...
The rest of the town, the layout.
Just don't want any more in Broad Street, you know, because they're building twenty... Hey, you're great, because that's what they're on, all the council application. Twenty seven houses. And five parking spaces.
There's a plan there somewhere that shows one car space at the front. And two where that, where the drop is at the back. Yeah, I've seen it, I don't miss it. It's ugly, but it's... We don't put that on screen, do we?
No.
How is this going to affect the new houses built up behind there? Are they raising it or they're converting it sideways?
The whole development is within the existing structure, there is none of extensions.
Because the road that goes aside is totally unmade up, it's very rough. And there's...
That's been serviced.
...white parking space in.
That has been serviced.
The last time I saw it, it was totally rough. Twenty, Liz Ainge's...
It has actually already been done, yeah.
Yeah, it's all been done, actually.
It's all been, yes, been serviced.
Do you wanna make a comment? Chair, can I just make a comment on that? As I say, I will pass here quite often and the cars come must either van near not be down as it come out there. So having too many cars come out of there is not very good. It's very confusing as well because it's another extra bit that people don't realise, they have to look on their left. Or, you know, as they come from the Kangal. So having too many cars in there is not very good, really. There's an accident waiting to happen.
So do we support this in principle, but concerned about the available parking spaces?
I think support reservations to meet the relevant fire escape.
Anyone happy with that? Number five, extension of existing drop curve at 117 Widdesfield Road. So we can read that, is this section on here? From there to there, they want a drop curve. Anyone got any comments? Betty?
Anything helps, the parking that's still running would be very welcome. Because it's shocking when there's a build of traffic. You get a bus and a lorry and you can't get a pull-in space. I hope everyone does better up there, so the more cars taken off the road, the better along that.
Chair, I would say the... None of the paperwork that I saw indicated what area would be that the cars would park on if it was drive or extend. And there's no reason, every reason to believe that vehicles parked in there would ever make a payment. There doesn't appear to be sufficient broad in front of the house for cars to do this way here. Which is a reason why it's an extension.
So I oppose it, I'm not around, or?
I think we need more information on the way to go to the net. We should propose it because it would lead to half community might stop on the highway, you know, footpath.
Is there any comments on highways?
Yeah, there is one, one comment, other than they require the wood under. They're just gonna have rules in place for working highways and that they would do work. I appreciate there's a picture of a big vehicle in there. But planning application can't take into account of what size vehicles somebody has. Because, well, I mean, that, that could be, but if that was a picture of a little mini.
There is a long, that's a long van, so I think if you drop the curb, you can get almost any car on the front there, I don't guess. There's a three and a half ton van, so...
I think you have to understand the objective here is to park straight in. It's not to park diagonally. That's why I'm concerned about it, opening it.
I don't think that's a, I don't think that would be an issue. But my advice is that's not a planning issue. We just, if you buy a smaller van, you could...
Actually, there is actually a big length for the distance on which you have to park from a car.
Yes, sir.
So if I may paraphrase what councillor Andre's concerns. It's Widdesfield Road. We know how busy it is, as councillor actually said earlier. It can get so busy that you can't even find a space to pull it out of the way with trucks and cars. If somebody's in the driveway that they need to go straight in and can't can't get around or they have that many cars that they need that big a driveway. I'd be concerned about the dangers to traffic and needing to reverse out. So I do share councillor Andre's concerns as to what ex, what reason is that they're asking for this and what the purpose of extending drivers? And are they taking into account the challenge of coming out of that drive?
Can I just ask? I thought that it was unlawful to reverse
Onto the high road?
Onto the high road, reverse out onto the high road. I thought in these circumstances, you had to come out onto the road facedown.
You're supposed to reverse into your spot and then drive out.
Oh, yeah. So I don't know whether that vehicle's visiting or whether... You know, I don't know whether that vehicle was taken and they put in windows or something, you know, whether people live there under the vehicle.
I don't recall having seen that sort of sized van on the front there.
I'd be concerned if that had to back out on Widdesfield Road.
Barry?
I was gonna say the same thing when I used to be involved. It's illegal to back out onto a main road. And that is classified as a main road still.
It doesn't stop people, huh?
I don't listen to that, they're doing all the bombing over there. But like you said, it's a hell of a busy road. You've got all that building work going on with lorries and cranes. And I forget the same reason is quicker to go around the town sometimes, it's ridiculous. And they do, they will be on that curve, you see.
Long servant, sorry.
If they're planning to have that curb on the wall removed, they can then reverse back the car sort of sideways on, can't they? Is that what they're planning to do, do you think?
Probably. You don't, I, I just don't see, I don't see there's a particular issue with it. And if you get another car off and park on Widdesfield Road, then that's gotta be a good thing.
But I'm advised that the size of the vehicle they've got is not a planning issue. So what we've got to do is consider whether we should allow them to have a wider drop curve.
The extra width will almost give them a drive in, drive out. That's, I think, a bit improved.
I support councillor Andre, but I'd like to hear how there's comments on it. With respect to that, it's a busy highway.
Yes. Can I just say that with respect to our comment?
Does it read, I will, if you make an objection, I would probably if most of the public have done for the other side as well as objection. I'm pretty sure what they're saying was that they want the, just because of the advantage, doesn't mean the right to work.
Now you're gonna get them or someone?
Focus on why they're doing it, yeah.
There's done highway comments, other than the fact that they want them or someone authorized.
It's a highway's objection, yeah. I would regard that as an objection.
I don't think that's what it was described as, it was a car's comment. But that would be something, regardless of what highway say, we can make this, we can object to highways perhaps in any case. It wouldn't be the first time a town has opened something that had this space.
That's true. Chair, can we see the highway's objection? It isn't an objection.
It is an objection, it's called a double lane's objection. Is it not on the way?
If we don't do this online, we do it online.
I think it's amongst documents shown on the screen, Chair.
That, the papers, the application that was set.
But this is everything that's come through. Quite close, isn't it?
I think you could put there plenty of application then search box. Just ready for the search box to come out. TC stroke five, stroke zero zero nine nine, stroke ten. It's not an objection, it's just a concern, a vision sort of kind of.
My point is car for the glass objection.
Thank you, wanted to say something?
Yeah, I'm just wondering, Chair, they, they're widening it so that they can revert, you know, turn around in, in that area. That's what I'm wondering there, and I'm not sure if that's the case or not. Because it doesn't, you know, we haven't, there's no writing saying that you're gonna use it to turn around in that area.
Well, I think we've had a quite negative discussion and a life at the time. Can we have a decision now on whether we're going to support it or not support it? Support for me. All those in paper?
How many left?
Two. All those against? Three. Objected. On the grounds of already racial code.
Unsafe.
And safe, and reverse on its own. Application six. Chain of use alcohol being stretched into a beauty room to run visits from home. My spire's call. Anyone got any comments?
Just asking, I'm not clear whether this is an application to change of use. It doesn't appear to be, but it's an application to do some building work. If it's just an application to do some building work, I have no problems.
Change of use, change of use is another one, change of use itself.
Yeah, they're taking down the middle wall to use a photograph. So basically, this gateway that has to be through, locked up. And the shed plus that area will become this beauty room.
Chair? Chair, I object on the chain of use and especially because of obviously there's gonna be cars coming in and parking in that area. Is there sufficient car parking for the area?
I always have objected to this one.
And also, you know, she shouldn't be running the business all heavy wherever the applicant is. There's, you know, there's plenty of place in over industrial state and also we've got shops, haven't we? So... So, you know, I've checked on that grounds, we've, we've got shorters of shops on High Street now as well. Maybe that's not a planning issue, but I think we should object on, on the ground of parking in that area.
Anyone support pack on that? Gotcha.
I've got a separate comment on that, except along the lines of what you're saying, with, with. Basically, I understand the rules for working at home and having the ability to work at home and self-employed. But this is quite clearly an application to open a shop type, retail type business, which has no bearing being in the middle of a private estate. It needs to be somewhere like the pizza place or the chicken place or somewhere like this where you've got a shop front, a place of parking and there's, there's proper provision. And there's certainly places available for rent within Havenhill which are of that nature.
Let's see.
It's not the kind of place I'd like to live in, but it's all right to consider.
Well, I don't, not only concerns about parking but disturbance to neighbours.
It doesn't look right.
Again, it's on High Street. So objection on parking issues. Number seven, plating and render to front elevation over Kate Queen's Court. People, just this one. Yeah, central, lovely brick house. Anyone got any comments?
Chair, as you say, it's saving the environment, isn't it? It's keeping the house warmer. That, using this, that should be.
Chair, I think we should cut, well, this isn't an installation project, this is purely decorative.
Oh, is it?
And the assertion, planning application, that it has happened elsewhere on the estate is palely untrue. I can't see any boxes on that square or adjoining squares that had planning. It's a very pleasant square with a nice grass patch in front. The whole thing is very symmetrical and very, all brickwork is similar and it stand out by noise.
I, I've just thought, there is cladding on there, there's wooden cladding on other parts of the estate. Whether that person means, means same thing, there is wooden cladding. There's quite a few houses that have got wood cladding. So whether that person means that, particularly the cladding, because if you just said about it's not insulation.
Barry.
There is, as Roger said, there are, the council or Higby, whoever they are, are actually group laden all of the houses on that estate. Part of the ones that have been sold.
Not this one. Not this is part of it.
Yeah, it's part, it's the, the new faraway as I call it, or where it is.
Yeah.
They're doing them all up there, but you've been down there lately.
So, so.
They're cladding or they're re-cladding, if you look at the.
Replacing, right, replacing.
Yeah, they've put on the new plastic type cladding up, so a lot of those houses have actually got the right wall in.
Yeah, but that one hasn't, has it? That's all brick.
Hasn't yet.
It hasn't yet. Need a decision.
You draw my objection, Chair, if that's the case, that's not why I'm bringing stuff there, but.
So everyone in favour? Five. Everyone's in favour? Number eight, continued change of use from class A1 breakout to class A3 coffee shop at 91 High Street. It's actually, you may think it's in Hammond Road.
It's Portuguese, Portuguese dreams coffee shop.
It's where Mike's the bushes used to be there.
So what, that really?
Yes. I was always told it's the old High Street, but obviously it's up one High Street. Anyone got any comments?
You can't do that.
No comment. Number nine, single story side extension, the garden, 4A, point and close. So this is one they're proposing to have on two. Anyone got any comments?
This edition of the garden, Chair, which substantially must be considered, no problem at all, it doesn't make a difference.
Number ninety nine. Number ten, trees in a conservation area, certification by number, sigamore twin stem tree, remove leading stem and re-pollard to main stem to existing pollard points at approximately 10 metres. And one number beach, re-pollard to existing pollard points at approximately 10 metres, remove dead limbs and found follow points. It's appendix one at the back of the issue. Yes. Refer you to appendix one at the back of the agenda. I'll read it out for those who are there. I refer to the Habletchack council's comments regarding the above application. The tree officer has been to sign and has not objected to, uh, proposals. Commenting that the removal of the sigamore leading stem would not be harmful and has not, has wrought at about two and a half metres and conflicts with electric and telephone cable and utility pole. The beach trees have been reduced in the past and as a consequence this will need to be depleted every eight to 10 years to retain trees at safe size given the tree's positions. But each could you consider in writing whether the town council wish to object to the proposals and if so, confirm the reason and have a written response by 26th of February. Why, he was first.
I have a feeling, I was going to say, he was saying, it was actually Andreessen's one. That's a very nice letter, but they've still not sent us the report for which they claim has been that tree, tree officer listed for. So they've sent us the letter, but I, I don't see the report. So where, where is the report that says what's claimed in the letter?
Does anyone want to echo that?
Absolutely, the same, why isn't this document at least on the website, on the portal? The public have a right to have all the information on these applications. This is an inception based information which hasn't been published. It's correspondence without our problem. That's not the proper ways of preparing planning applications. Having said that, I'm prepared to accept that as satisfactory evidence that work is required and that we should approve the, the application.
Subject to your comments.
Well, that's really not for the applicant so much as for the, the planning officers who plan to put the information available onto the portal.
Yes, of course. Yes, yes, again. Do you have that part? I think that echoes what the plan's been saying, but it's, it's tenures opposite. So we'll, we'll accept that as being okay. Is that an application, Chair? Can we just say, just say. Application eleven, conversion of garage to bedroom and provision of a second parking space device scheme at 62 Hells Farm Road.
We saw this one before and we clearly have the access to the reference and also part of the, the rates before. And what the applicant has done is offer to sign a copy so that the land should have been, but the car way is converted to become effectively a car way. In return for them getting planning permission for the parking space at the back of their property, for their, their plan B that they could have originally.
Anyone got any comments? No comments?
Just wanted to see the.
So this bit along there was supposed to be, highways, please, what it was, highways. Unfortunately, due to planning error by the planning authority, the whole thing belongs to the applicant. So the applicant said, I will decide a session by six, we've been giving you this, so the public have right of access in perpetuity in return for parking here. So I can get out onto the road here.
Okay, everyone in favour? Everyone's in favour. Number twelve, regulation for application, change of use to class D1, a drug and alcohol treatment centre, without compliance of condition two of SE stroke 11 stroke 1546. To allow this permission to be personal to the applicant turning point. And is that eight square meters square?
When this was first given, the original condition was that it was per, the permission was personal to open road refusions. And the successor body to that turning point needs that condition changed because at the moment that is only for previous agency, not for any agency. So this is quite technical, they need to be done for technical point, have planning permission to do that as well.
I assume it's fair to make, anyone got any comments?
Yes. I believe they do a very good job there and need your support.
Okay.
I think if I remember this, I think it's, it's pretty old, yeah, we dealt, it's a very old time, I think. But I do remember that we put very carefully some conditions on that planning permission, so I might as well support it. But in strict compliance with the original conditions that were placed on that.
I remember that and I give a poster over there and I understand the concerns raised at the meeting, but like a lot of other places that raises concern when they come round for planning permission. You wouldn't actually know it was there unless you knew it was there.
Yeah, but I mean, that was the point of those conditions, wasn't it?
Yeah, I mean, you, you can walk through X square, you wouldn't have no inkling that there's a drug ring out place in the square. There's no sign of drug paraphernalia or anything, so.
Chair, can I just say that I've been there a couple of times, um, to.
Do you need to declare that?
But just that I've been there on. Oh, I take about nineteen pills a day. Yeah, I've been there by invite twice and then formally invited and then I was invited informally and I've been along. And it, it, the group that attend this are on some form of programme. They're not there to buy drugs, substitutes or methadone or, or take any alternatives. They're people that have decided to make changes to their life and it's a group meeting, well, I think, I, Betty, I think they've, they've done a fantastic job.
Yeah. So all there else to do is, when we gave the original plan application, it was to a different applicant and now someone else has taken over the service. And the planning permission needs to be given to the new applicant, so that's all it is. So we're happy for that to go ahead, I think, for support. Number thirteen, provision of a bin storage structure at 28A Queen Street.
This is actually a retrospective application and this is what the applicant has said to explain what they've done to.
This petition.
We use a.
I think the committee is very pleased when people make provision of a bin storage. We're happy to support this?
Yeah.
Number nine, who matters to report? Any council's got anything to say?
Chair, just, um, I keep forgetting to do it myself, I just wondered, you know, as you, by the, um, wall pack, uh, the main road there, there's. Two main road lights are out, it's quite dangerous because there's a crossing there, not a zebra cross or anything, but there's a, a crossing with an island in them. And the two main lights are out and they've been out for quite some time and I keep forgetting to take the numbers of them. And we bought it and I just wondered if we could do it, and, you know, I keep forgetting it because it is quite, quite dangerous.
You took that respond, you brought home.
Yeah, I'll, I'll just place it somewhere, I don't know.
Well, the meeting finished at, uh, seven forty five.